Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of September the 24th, 2024. Meeting has been called to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez, here. Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Here.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here. Those that are able, if you would please rise and join me in the pledge this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number four, public comments for items not on the agenda. City Clerk.
Would the following members of the public please approach the podium? Rebecca Milano, followed by Max Wayne, followed by Devin Kumar.
Hi, good evening, everybody. First, I'd like to start off by saying thank you to Councilmember Sandy Alvarez and thank you to Councilmember Marty Medina for coming to our Merchants Association Town Hall meeting last week. I started the Merchants Association because in this town, the small businesses don't have a voice and they don't have any representation with the lack of a Chamber of Commerce. I've spent the last year trying to navigate how to really get anything done in this town. So I really appreciate Councilmember Alvarez and Mr. Medina showing up. So I just wanted to start off with that. Thank you. It really does make a difference in the community when the public is able to engage with our local government. This is called "The City with the Heart," and from my time being here, I have felt that through the community, through our customers, through my neighbors who are here tonight. And unfortunately, we've grown very close due to the suffering that we've had to go through for the last year with the parking program downtown. So I -- we're all here to share our concerns. The six-month mark is coming up. I think the council and the city has heard repeatedly of the continued issues with the technology, the actual kiosks, the kind of overall inequity of the program, being that it's more expensive than other towns. It's very difficult for our senior citizens to function. And so I think what you're going to see tonight is just really a call back to focus on the community. About a month ago, I heard Councilmember Medina say that, you know, the community wasn't as thought of as much as it should have been. And honestly, I cried because it was the first time that I felt like somebody sitting up there really understood how painful this has been for us. You know, Sandy and Marty heard last week one resident say that the community in this neighborhood is in crisis due to these meters. And it's not a matter of revenue or a program failing. It's a matter of we need to fix it because people are just suffering. Us as business owners, our new job has become to police the streets, to make sure that people are paying so they avoid this $50 tickets. And what you'll hear is that it goes beyond getting a ticket, right? Getting a ticket when you're just out doing your local shopping or maybe meeting somebody for coffee, it sucks and it messes up your day. And then to take it a step further of it, the ticket was made in error, you have to now go home and get online and fix it and go through all of that. It's been really harmful to our community. So I really hope that the focus is brought back on the people. And I hope that you really heed, hear the constituents, business owners, and the people that have come to this podium and ask for your help. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Honorable City Council, I'm here to raise the same voice. Doesn't want to sound like a broken record, but I would like to invite you sometime to see the customer who come here to buy a cup of coffee and they end up with a $50 ticket. Really, you have to see their face, their emotions, their reaction. And we are the one who have -- we have to calm them down. We have no choice. Sometime we talk to the meter, ticket giver, but they don't care. They're just the contractor workers and they're just there to just fill up the quota without saying. But businesses are suffering. And there's no place we can go to raise our voice beside you guys. Sorry. Sometimes it's so frustrating when you say, "Why am I even here?" If you look at the street of San Bruno, San Mateo Avenue, you can stand right on side of one end and you can see all the way to the El Camino, there's nobody. On top of that, we have this restrictions, this, you know, major upsetting to the customer. Nobody wants to come here no more. Many people say, "Now I go to Be Hill. Now I go to El Camino. Now I'll go to this place or that place," just because they don't want to get tickets. I don't want to get tickets. I don't want to see them getting tickets. It was a good program. We started out on a good intention. But at the same time, it went on the very, on the other extreme. So we need to fix this program. And I recommend that we put this on the next agenda, next meeting, and we should halt it until we really fix it because the program is broken. And you can -- you guys know that already. Everybody knows this. Everything is not working the way it's supposed to. Chaos, kiosks are not working. It's become chaos to me. So please, consider this to putting on the next meeting's agenda. I will highly recommend that. So hear other people and come up with a solution. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Devin. And again, I'm going to echo the same, same issues that we are facing. I present the nonprofit and also our, our old community, San Antonio San Bruno, where we have very senior citizens that come to our temple. And with every day, there's a fear of this, this devotees navigating away from us because they're scared part of the ticket, getting a ticket. So thanks for giving us opportunity. Our downtown is suffering. The parking program has become a nightmare for both merchants and customers. We see kiosks malfunctioning, people getting ticketed seconds after they park. So just two days ago, a customer came in, went to booth one, the kiosk one, not functioning, went to second, third, four different kiosks. They're all malfunctioning in the morning when there's not enough sunlight. I think the system is in the sleep mode. So by the time they went to a fifth kiosk, they already have a ticket on their windshield. So, and that's a nightmare. So some tickets are issued unfairly. I've heard from numerous customers who paid but still end up with a fine. They're forced to contest it, wasting their time and energy. This is especially big issue for seniors who struggle to navigate this complex system. It's not just about inconvenience, it's about fairness. Aggressive enforcement. We really see that people are pleading to tell them, "Hey, I tried this kiosk. I tried that kiosk and it still doesn't work." But there is no one listening. I highly recommend that we do put this on the agenda so we can talk about this and bring in other merchants on board so we can discuss this and get this resolved. I totally agree with the rest of my colleagues over here that this program needs revision. This program needs to be revised. The meter structure has to have an increment. We're the only city where you pay 75 cents for 24-minute, 24-minute parking, where it should be downgraded. So we have to look at our structure and look at how can we make it better. Downtown needs help. People are navigating away from our city. We need them back. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speakers are Ben Mahabir, followed by Hari Sharma, followed by Ray Moser, followed by Abhishek Neelam Market.
Good evening. I'm Ben Mahabir from the temple. We are here again supporting the merchandise, merchants here in the downtown area, plus, plus our, what do you call, temple itself. We are suffering a lot due to this parking. A lot of the seniors, they come to the temple, they don't have any understanding how the system works. So I have been helping them as much as I can. And most of the time, there are malfunction on the machines. So by the time they go to other places and do the same thing all over and come back and they already receive tickets. Recently, I heard somebody had the ticket by just putting zero and O, one and I. That made a difference. They also had to place their tickets on the windshield of the vehicles and still they got the ticket. So I think it is time to look into it. And anytime I'm, my major concern is anytime those machines go off, this would be come on a city record that at this time, this ticket was, a machine went off, went dead or whatever. So that there is a track. And when the customer comes to fight it in the court, they'll have a record saying, "Yes, the machine washed down." And by the time they went to the next machine and got it and when they received the ticket, that ticket should be, you know, avoided or done something. And as I say, our customers are mostly senior citizens and they need a friendly user where they can go through those things easy. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing us to say a few words about our parking problem in, in San Bruno. My office is in 614 San Mateo Avenue. I've been there for the last three years. Since my landlord had so much violation problem, I am not able to get permit for my office, which we're working through it. But hopefully soon I'll have that whereby, you know, I get some free parking. In the meantime, every day I put in $3.50, seven days a week for the whole month since this program started. And just recently, the machines don't work. The one by the temple definitely don't work. So now I have to go all the way towards where Articack Joe is, is in that area. That machine works. So I have to pay there, park my car, and then walk back to my office. So that's my problem currently I'm having, and I don't know how long this thing is going to continue. The other problem, when it initially started, this program started, I was the one who parked my car just to put some of my stuff over to my office and come back. Next thing I know, I have a ticket there. I don't know where the guy was sitting, what kind of microscope he's using, but that was pretty fast. And I told the guy, "I am just dropping my stuff. I'm not going to park here. I'm going to leave." So I got a thing. I got a ticket for 50 bucks. My employee had the same problem. Same problem, just switching drivers from one car to another one, another 50 bucks. I said, "Just pay it. Let's not fight the city hall. It's no point." So this kind of problem, I don't know how long this is going to continue, but I think it's bad for me, my employees, and the customers that come serve me. I have to tell them, "Please go pay your, you know, tickets out there because this is a meter that's enforced." And it's enforced every minute you are not in your car or you haven't paid. So they have to get out of my office, go pay the money. So I don't know if we all have the solution to this problem, but certainly there are other cities that, that go through the same thing. I don't think they have this level of confusion and distraction. I am, my customers that come in have a very limited time. They have to come in, talk about their taxes and all that stuff. And then I tell them, "Hey, listen, keep in mind how much time you have on your meter." So because sooner or later, you're going to get a ticket. And those, these are not cheap tickets. Is it my time? Is that?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your time and your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to thank you publicly for sending me the email. I appreciate that very much. Mr. Hamilton, said a little prayer for you. It's good to see you here. My friend and me, Alex, isn't here. But you guys know, if you may choose all your life, the first thing you do is go down and look at someone's shoes. Or if you paint, you critique other people's paintings. I was in construction, had my own little company, doing very good until I decided to retire. That bothers me. And it's been there month after month after month. I know Alex likes to say his men do very good work in the field. Well, maybe he should grab one, take him out of the field and finish the job. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Honorable City Council. My name is Abhishek. I represent Neelam Pacific Market from 492 San Mateo Avenue. I'd just like to put a little bit more emphasis on how Laz enforces the parking in downtown San Bruno. So over the past six months, I've been noticing that when people park, they require at least five to 10 minutes, depending on their age and how, you know, how much knowledge they have on, on the technology that's used for the parking meters. For some reason, Laz is ticketing people within two to three minutes of literally parking on the streets. I've actually confronted Laz employees regarding this issue. They've reversed a few tickets, but then most of the majority of the people, they tell to contest. I've lost at least eight, 10% of my business in the last six months. We've been there for 30 years, so I've never lost business like that in, in that short span of a time. People feel like they're being penalized for coming downtown San Bruno. There's no other way to put it. Laz is just, you know, too strict on, on citing people. There's no form of, hey, you know, like, please pay your, your citation or your ticket. Literally, I've literally observed people walking away from their car and Laz employees pulling up right behind them and putting up citations. And, you know, that's not fair. I feel like there should be some type of a timeframe that they follow. Like, somebody parks, give them five minutes to figure out how to pay for parking. Then going back to half of the kiosks not working. Literally, last Friday, I had somebody that was out of town parked in front of my store. They went to the kiosk on the corner of San Mateo, didn't work. Then they looked to the side, there is a meter that's not working on the side of the laundromat. So they assumed that was the next meter. They walked over there. By that time, Laz had written them a ticket. Then they went into Lot Three, but they can't pay for the street parking in Lot Three. So that just becomes very confusing for somebody that's not used to the system and all the lots and different, you know, areas of, of parking. So the lady came back and I told her, "Hey, you got a ticket," while you were trying to figure out how to pay for your parking. She confronted Laz and then they reversed her ticket. But, you know, just figure how many people we aren't helping that are getting those tickets. And then, you know, they have a bad taste in their mouth. They're not going to come back to San Bruno. We are all losing business. All, all my, you know, fellow business owners. San Bruno downtown has become a ghost town the past few months. I don't know if you all have noticed, but that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I have no other speaker cards.
No, not too late. I'm sorry, City Clerk. I jumped in there. And then, I don't know, City Clerk, if you don't mind, if you're okay, just give the name for the record for the City Clerk.
Sure. My name is Neil Sherman. I live in San Bruno the last 24 years. I'm a small business owner. I have a business that started in San Bruno, consulting business. And from that launched a technology business, which is now in Berlin Game with 14 employees. I'd love to be in San Bruno but couldn't find suitable place. But I'm very concerned about the parking in San Bruno. I used to be a, I used to own a, actually, the original Gelato Classico, which was downtown San Francisco. Actually, I mean, it was in Coal Valley near UCSF. And it was very hard. It was, my late wife ran it. And I ended up running it. And basically, one-third of the income went on ice cream. One-third went on employees. One-third went on rent. And the fourth-third went on everything else. So I understand how hard it is for these businesses who put their life savings in many cases into running a business. And, and some of them are reporting 30% loss in sales. You can see downtown is visibly empty a lot of the time. The, the streets are empty. The parking places are empty. If the point of the parking was to move from the street to the rear lots, that's not working because the rear lots are also empty a lot of the time. I parked it perfectly in a space in a rear lot on a Sunday morning and was very surprised to get $100 ticket for double parking. And I did win it. It got vacated. Thankfully, they took a picture. But it's a disaster and it's, it's, if, if the aim is to make downtown a lively place, a welcoming place, it's not happening. It's, it's doing the opposite. It's, there's a ring of poverty around that area. And those people can't afford to pay for parking. I don't know anyone that says it's helped me. They, you know. So I please urge you to do the right thing. And I think that would be to suspend or completely close the parking scheme. I mean, El Camino is empty now. I haven't seen a car in ages parked on El Camino, which is where I used to park and do a short half-block walk. It's just a disaster. And it's, you know, when, when people are laying off employees, that doesn't help San Bruno. When those employees don't have money, that doesn't help San Bruno. They're not spending money. It's, it's taxes that's not being made. It's, it's not good for the, the health of the city. So I urge you to please change your minds on this parking scheme. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please. Or are there any other speakers? I'm sorry. Okay. There were several comments and questions, and I, I know Chief Johansson is obviously not here, which is entitled. But I, the acting chief, which is the captain, is coming up to the mic, ask if you might be able to just address some of those. Because some of the concerns are the, have been talked to by several of the individuals. A lot of it's about the kiosks not working specifically, or the enforcement element of it. And I do know that, I know some people this weekend said, "Well, you have to go down to court." And I know you go online. So if you could just, with what was been said, maybe help give us some background or thoughts, please.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. First off, with the kiosk being out of service, we are aware of some increasing numbers based on the change of season right now. The sun angle has changed and the solar panels are now not charging as they are designed. So we're in the process working with the vendor to try to come up with a permanent solution to those, whether it's powering them with a, one of the light poles that's there, or moving them to locations that have better solar coverage. We're still evaluating those as we speak, as we, again, started seeing the increase of downed issues for that. As we said a little bit earlier, we had 16 kiosks that are currently experiencing some level of non-functioning out of 83. But I will note that eight of those are due to a vandalism case that was recently done in the Foreigner Block of San Mateo Avenue, that we are still awaiting parts from the vendor to repair. So we are seeing, I don't want to say all the issues are caused by vandalism, but there's a lot of issues with our current kiosks caused by what we're saying is people purposely damaging some component of them to not let them function. So we're constantly trying to catch up with that with staff to replace those parts and get the machines back in operational. As for the, the disputing of tickets, if individuals feel that they are not, or shouldn't be cited on those tickets, there's a website, pticket.com. I urge you to go on there, report the ticket as you feel what's wrong with it. Our traffic sergeant intakes all of those. And the traffic sergeant has access to the database to show if a kiosk in that location was up or down at the current time the citation was issued. We also get to see when a person bought a permit. If they end up buying a permit and that timeframe is timestamped to the ticket timestamp, and we can cross-reference those and are dismissing those if we feel that they should not be issued a citation. So we are like, so aware of these issues and we are working to try to resolve them as quickly as we can.
I'm wondering just, thank you for that information, but on how that can maybe be communicated. Is there, is there a place that they can go to, anybody can go to, whether it's online, whether it's information on the kiosk, or anything that would help enlighten folks to understand, like, hey, you know. So for me, I would probably now be taking a picture or having it time stamped or something like that. But I don't, we don't want customers and visitors to have to go through that. But I'm just wondering about getting that information out, or a timeline in which the repairs. And you may not know that. So if you don't know that, I understand.
Yeah, we've ordered the parts. They're in route from the vendor. It's just a matter of receiving the parts. And there's some technical, I don't say difficulties, but it's, it's complicated to change a credit card reader. There's a lot of security behind it with the vendors. And there's a lot of phone calls that have to be made when you swap out a reader so it actually accepts payment. So there's, there's time, it consumes staff time consumed in those, those repairs. It's not as easy as just swapping a, a reader out in a machine. But yes, we, we could happily update our website with some more information about the process to do that. Laz has been directed to post information on the machines that are not broke, or that are not working completely. And there's also the QR code to pay. There's other forms of ways that this can happen. In the meantime, we're trying to get back up operational.
Okay. Thank you. Acting chief.
Mr. Mayor.
Well, Mr. Hamilton.
Okay.
Thank you. So just a clarification on the numbers. So right now, we have 16 kiosks that are down. Does that 16 include the eight that were vandalized? Or is it 16 that have the solar issue and then another eight were vandalized?
The 16 is the total number.
It's a total number.
All encompassing.
Okay. Out of 83. Okay. Regarding the, the process for getting, for disputing a ticket, and I do understand that, that for the people who do dispute the tickets, those, those seem to get, those do seem to get resolved. What I've seen and what I've been, been hearing from, from folks downtown is the folks who are technically savvy enough to use the QR code, the, the, the online version of paying instead of, and avoiding the kiosk altogether, they don't seem to have very many problems. But a lot of people use the kiosks and rely only on the kiosks. Not everybody has a, has a smartphone. Not everybody is technically savvy enough to navigate the whole phone thing because it's not an app, you know, it was, it was sold to us as being an app. It's a website that you get to through your phone's browser. And I, I use it. I've, I'm very technically savvy and I have worked, I put some shortcuts into my phone to make it easier.
Hold on. I just seen the light go on with the city attorney.
I'm sorry.
Oh, Mayor Medina, I just wanted to mention that this is not an agenda item and so comments need to be very brief, brief responses.
Got it. Okay.
This isn't on the agenda. So.
So what I, so I'll get right to the point, which is the, I believe that the information for how to dispute a ticket needs to be posted on the kiosk because we have lots of people who only use the kiosk and will not go find a website, go find, use the QR code or all of that. That's it. Thank you.
Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you. And I'm going to go straight to the point. So when a kiosk isn't functioning, could Laz be informed or be that perhaps don't go issue tickets in the vicinity of the inoperable kiosk because that, that seems to be creating an issue?
I will tell you, there's active alerts on these kiosks and they're shared with Laz, our CSO group, and myself and the traffic sergeant. So we are aware of those issues live as they happen. And there is enforcement modifications that are made based on what the issues are.
Okay. I guess we'll wait for this bigger meeting to be able to get into the details of all of this. But just wanted to thank everybody for showing up and sharing their concerns. And the information you provided is appreciated. So thank you.
Thank you very much. And thank you to all of you for being here and communicating that. I know I've heard things as well, but I appreciate you taking the time to be here with us this evening. Thank you very much. Now we'll move on to item number five, announcements and presentations. Now we'll move on to item number five, announcements and presentations. First is a proclamation recognizing October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I'll be brief because we do have three, and then we have Karen here that we want to hear from. Whereas October 2024 is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and whereas breast cancer is the second most common kind of cancer in women, about one in eight women born today in the United States will get breast cancer at some point. Whereas about 2,790 new cases of male breast cancer will be diagnosed in 2024, and the survival for men is similar to the survival for women. And whereas screenings, early detection, and prompt treatment can significantly reduce suffering and deaths caused by this disease. And now therefore, I Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2024 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And the City of San Bruno would encourage all residents to support the efforts of the foundations who will contribute funds to support the research to hopefully someday find a cure. Go to item B, and that is proclaiming and recognizing October 2024 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And we do have the director to accept it, and so I will keep it brief because I think we want to hear more from her. Whereas more than one in three women and one in four men and one in two transgender individuals experience some form of physical or sexual violence and/or stalking by their intimate partner in their lifetime. And whereas there were 8,275 requests for service through community overcoming relationship abuse known as CORs 24-hour crisis hotline and law enforcement referrals last year, and 2,378 adults and teens receive community education on healthy relationships and the impact of intimate partner abuse. And whereas the City of San Bruno, as part of the San Mateo County, recognizes a critical need for countywide services in order to support our residents, and now therefore, I Rico E. Medina have it be resolved that as Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim the month of October 24 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month to raise awareness about the, and encourage all residents of the City of San Bruno to do their part to help our community. And obviously, I'm going to turn it over to Karen so that she can give us some updates and some information, please.
Thank you very much, Mayor Medina. It's lovely to be here and to address all of you as well, and to be able to chat with you as city council members as well. The reason these proclamations are so critical is that it's an opportunity for us to call out and bring into public awareness a crime that occurs most frequently behind closed doors. In fact, when we at CORA are out in the community presenting about intimate partner abuse to Rotary Clubs, to churches, to a Chamber of Commerce, to businesses, small businesses, to groups of students, we have a similar and all-too-frequent experience. Someone after the presentation will come up and say, this is me. This is my friend. This is my sister. Recently, I was presenting at a gathering of agencies that provide personal care attendant services, so it was not sort of my typical group, and somebody in the middle of that meeting actually shared, this is how my cousin died. A man approached me at one presentation and shared that his sister was filing for divorce from an abusive spouse, and he was so worried about the custody of the children, his nephews. Intimate partner abuse is unfortunately much more common than any of us want and way too frequently in the shadows. And so whenever we can shine a light on the crime and the path out of harm's way for survivors and their children, it gives the team at CORA hope. To this end, CORA works on behalf of the County of San Mateo and for all of the cities within the county for the people by providing the following supports. We have a hotline 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year, and staff provide a wide range of assistance, referrals, and safety plans, and just offering comfort and somebody who will validate the experience. We have two safe house shelters that provide emergency care as well as a whole system of hoteling people when there is a need for somebody to immediately get out of their situation. And then we have longer-term rental assistance. So we are bringing in now over a million dollars in rental assistance to the County of San Mateo in order to provide subsidies because we know that if you can't get into that next rental, how are you ever going to get out of that household where harm is happening? We offer legal services, including restraining orders and guidance. We provide mental health services, individual adult, individual and group, and adult and children. And we have a wide range of education and prevention programs. All our services are free, and our hotline number, just in case anybody is out there or for anybody who might be needing to write it down, is 1-800-300-1080. So CORA is also engaging, and this is the last thing I wanted to share, especially with the City of San Bruno, is that we have been engaging with the Speak Up campaign. It's actually been a year since we were reaching out, a little over a year since we were reaching out to all of the cities, and 11 cities have engaged. And what it does is that we bring to businesses within the city a swag bag of bathroom stickers and these QR card, business cards that people can take if they want to get CORA resources. And importantly, we offer a 15-minute free training that is right there done on the spot to any of the employees in the business. And it just says how to recognize intimate partner abuse, what are the red flags, and what do you say to somebody? What don't you say to somebody? Because it's really all of us as a community partnership, they're going to help those who are having harm happening behind their closed doors be able to access the resources. So I hope that maybe the City of San Bruno will consider joining in with Speak Up. We would love to come in whatever shape, form you all want to have us, and that's maybe something to consider as we move forward in the next year. But meanwhile, we're deeply grateful that San Bruno is highlighting that it is Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and we greatly appreciate your support and your partnership. Thank you.
And I want to say for those, I did go to CORA when we hosted a council of cities, and it's one thing to hear about it, but it's also another to see where the calls are being taken at the facility and the various assistance that is available. So that was an eye-opening experience and well worth myself attending that and learning firsthand what CORA does and how they help people. So thank you very much for all you do. Next item is item C, proclaiming and recognizing October 2024 as National Filipino-American Heritage Month. I'll just read a couple of the whereas's. Whereas after years of advocacy by individuals and organizations, in 2009, the United States Congress recognized the contributions and sacrifices made by the Filipino community and recognized October as Filipino-American History Month. And whereas in the month of October, we honor the history, pursuits, accomplishments, and legacy of Filipinos in the United States with Filipino-American History Month. And whereas diversity represents one of our greatest strengths, and by recognizing the contributions and accomplishments of the Filipino-American men and women, our city celebrates the importance of inclusion to build a brighter future for our community. Now therefore, I Rico E. Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, do hereby proclaim October as National Filipino-American History Month and encourages all to recognize the richnessness of the Filipino-American experience and honor the contributions of the Filipino-Americans. With that, we're going to move on to our next item, which is receive an annual update from the Citizens Prevention Committee, and we are honored to have two members here, and we will hear from the chair.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, council member, and thank you, staff. I'm just going to give a quick presentation. I've been told that to keep this short, so if you have any questions at the end, be happy to answer those. So we are the Crime Prevention Committee. The name has changed from citizens to crime prevention now, so, but this is our annual report for 2024 as mandated by the, by the bylaws. So I'm the chair, Rich Wong. Our vice chair is Deanna Robinson. We have committee members, Peter, he's here as well, Peter Carey. Other committee members, Robert Riekel, Rhonda Boone, June Jen, and Maria Concha. Thank you so much, City Council, for filling all the seats. Makes life a lot easier. And our police liaison is Officer Garrison Sexton. So in our activities and accomplishments, basically, our main charter is neighborhood watch programs. So we assist existing neighborhood watch programs and groups and encourage formation of new neighborhood watch groups. We do advertising through neighborhood watch programs on San Bruno Police Department websites next door and on the San Bruno City, City Net. We also assist with the chat with the chief program. This is where the chief comes out to neighborhoods and talks to community members. So we're there actively supporting Chief Johansson to encourage additional neighborhood watch groups, and we participated in meetings and had several more scheduled whenever that that is able to get scheduled. And we have some tentative dates in other areas throughout the city very soon. Our biggest party, if you will, would be the National Night Out. This is the point where, well, we had, I believe, seven neighborhoods that had a national night out within San Bruno. The Glenview Park, Crystal Springs, Merrimont, Sea Cliff, Shelter Creek, for the first time this year, San Bruno Downtown was present, and Balboa. And we really appreciate, I mean, we get a lot of mileage out of this. The communities get a lot of mileage out of this, especially when council members come out and visit as well, along with the police chief and the fire chief and the fire trucks and the kids and everything, get to see all this. It becomes a very eye-opening. They get to share, and a lot of times, they demystify some of the fears that are out there with the police department or whoever, and they join together and really strengthens the bond with the neighborhood watch group. So that's been very successful for us, and we depend on that annually, and our city council has been very, very supportive of that. Thank you very much for coming out to the neighborhoods and being a part of that. We also help with Coffee with the Cop. There was one at One Love Cafe in June 7th, and we have another one scheduled for Starbucks in Bay Hill. Don't quite have the date yet, but we'll be there to assist San Bruno Police Department when they have that. Another big item that we participate in is Police Day at Tanfran. There, we actually have a table where we try to help San Bruno residents start neighborhood watch groups. We've actually started a couple of them just by meeting them during that period. So that's a good, good thing for us. So the Crime Prevention Committee is making an effort to work with other city committees, such as the Community Preparedness Committee, to share information, sort of joining in on some of the common things that we do together. Our committee strives to continue to work with Chief Johansson and the police department to establish more neighborhood watch groups so they encompass the majority of the city. And we look forward to in-person events in the future, more in-person events in the future. So when does it happen? It's the second Thursday of every month at 7:00, and it's at the San Bruno Police Department, second floor conference room. And usually, our agenda is just neighborhood watch, planning and event planning, and meetings are open to the public, so please join us. Any questions?
Thank you very much, and the city clerk had the agenda correct, and if I had just read it, Crime Prevention Committee, yes. It used to be before the Citizens Crime Prevention Committee. Thank you very much for the report. Any questions or comments from colleagues? Vice Mayor.
Rich, thank you for the presentation. If somebody is not able to attend the meeting, but they are interested in establishing a group, is there someone they can reach out to? Is there a website they can go to to get information?
Yeah, we encourage all the public to come out, and there's a Zoom meeting that they can attend if they're not able to actually go down to the police department and attend the meeting in person. From there, if they are interested, we, we always invite those folks that are on Zoom to follow up with them and say, if you're interested in forming a neighborhood watch group, you know, stay on the line or see us afterwards. But at the very least, they can contact our police liaison, Officer Sexton, and we'll establish some communications and getting some organization to help build their neighborhood watch.
Perfect. Thank you.
Anything, Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you, Rich, for the presentation. It's always good to see you. I just wanted to comment on National Night Out downtown. I thought that was incredibly well-attended and a lot of fun, and when Tanfran eventually closes, I mean, we got to find a new place to have more of Police Day events, and I look forward to downtown being one of those locations. So thanks to all involved.
Yeah, and just to add to that, the downtown location is very targeted to San Bruno residents, whereas the Police Day in Tanfran, we get a lot of neighboring cities that come in and visit, so we actually get more production of forming neighborhood watches in downtown San Bruno.
Thank you.
Once again, thank you very much to you and the committee. Please give us, give them our thanks and appreciation.
Will do. Thank you.
Any speaker cards on?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, thank you. We're going on to item six, consent calendar. All items are considered routine or implemented in an earlier council action and may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussions unless requested. There will be one single public comment period for all these items in this section with the exception of unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. Are there any for separate vote? Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item I.
I for a separate vote.
For a separate vote.
Understood. Any other separate votes? Any items with comments, questions? Councilmember Hamilton.
Yes, I have F, H, and K, each for a short comment and corrections.
Anything else?
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make sure.
Councilmember Medina.
Thank you. Just wanted to make sure I will have to recuse myself from item K. For.
Yes, but we, you can just say, and we'll make it within the motion, and so.
Great, thank you.
And then on item J, I just, I have to read, make a comment on that. Are there any others? Okay, let's start going down the list. F, consider approval of the City of San Bruno's response letter to the 2023-2024 San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report, Restaurant Exteriors.
See, this is just really, really minor. I, I read through the, our response letter, you know, a couple of times when I went through the packet, and but only today, only just a little while ago, when I looked at it, I found, I found a typo in the letter. So this is on page 27 of the packet and the second, the second page of the response letter, right at the end, and it says that we're going to complete our analysis by January 9th, 2024, and I think that's a typo, that means 2025. So I just wanted to highlight that for the, before we sign it and send it off. That was it.
Thank you. G, consider approval of the City of San Bruno's response letter to the 2023-2024 San Mateo County Civil Grand Jury Report, The State of Compost Compliance in San Mateo County.
I pulled F, H, and K.
Oh.
I didn't pull G.
F, H, and?
K.
K, sorry.
No worries.
Okay. H, now we'll go to H.
Okay.
Consider adoption the resolution approving the design of the 2324 and 2425 Street Rehabilitation Project.
Yeah, I just wanted to highlight this for the public. You know, as we've, as we've been talking about on many meetings throughout this year, we're paving at the, at a rate that we haven't seen in, at a long time here in San Bruno, repaving our streets, and this is a result of our, our residents coming forward and pitching in through Measure G, and, and of course, our, our staff being able to organize these projects and get them together. So this is a, this is a pretty major, a pretty major next step in our repaving with large areas within districts one, two, and three being focused on this time. large areas within districts 1, 2, and 3 being focused on this time. And so I just wanted to highlight this for the, for the public, that, you know, as we love to say, you know, we love paving, and the, this is where, this is where we're starting to see the results. So I just wanted to highlight that, and then thank, thank our Public Works and, and city team for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Medina.
Just wanted to add a little bit in there, because I am interested in sharing that information as well. This is $7.5 million of paving work. That's also in addition to another $1 million in slurry work that was approved in July of 2024. So $8.5 million of street maintenance work. San Bruno Public Works does love paving. The more funds they have, the more that they will pave. And I wanted to share that in District 4, although there is no paving scheduled, the council did approve a $15 million project that is replacing all the sewer south of San Bruno Avenue and avenues 2, 3, 4, 5, and 6. And all of those streets will have new paving. So there is plenty of paving going around in San Bruno, and it's something that I look forward to seeing more of in the, in the future, years ahead. So thank you to all.
All right, we'll go on to J. We're going to skip over I. Consider adoption of resolution approving the Second Amendment to the employment agreement between the City of San Bruno and Alex D. McIntyre. The city council have had a discussion with the city manager, and at this time, what is on the, for the measure is a salary increase of 3.75% to the city manager, and that's what's before you on the agenda. And now we're going to go to K. Consider adoption of a resolution approving the Design for Florida Park Project.
Thank you. Just another brief comment, just to highlight for the, for the public that this, that this project is going to get underway to finally complete Florida Park. There had been concerns when we were talking about various projects, you know, which project should go first, you know, Centennial or Florida. So we're going to be able to get, get them both going. So Centennial is about complete, and the Florida project is getting underway. I'm glad to see that we've been able to engage, engage with the same contractor that's working on Centennial Plaza. They're doing beautiful work there. So hopefully, this is going to be a nice fruitful partnership for our public projects going forward. And this is going to be a great, great project for our, for our city. So I just wanted to, to highlight it for the public. Thank you.
I think the other item would be that it is less. So that's great news.
Oh, that it came in less than, yeah.
Yes.
$600 less.
Not you. So that is significant, that have actually something come in under. And so that's good news, and we appreciate that. Okay, so I think I've covered the items thus far, with the exception of I. Any public comments?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay. So back to the council, and in the motion, if we could approve all consent items, noting that K, Councilmember Medina is recusing himself, and that, and will not include I, of course. That's excluding I.
Through the mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve all items under consent except for I, with the understanding that Councilmember Medina is recused from Item K.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion, Hamilton, seconded Alvarez. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Now we'll move on to Item I. Consider adoption of resolution updating the City of San Bruno Employee Hourly Pay Schedule for 2024, effective September 23, 2024. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to eliminate the city manager's office salary, 3.75, from my concerns. Initially, I wanted to see the job description of the changes from the, the title change from the CDD office, the manager, to the deputy, deputy building official. And the salary that was presented, I was hoping to see the, the salary between the two, the, between the, the management and also the, the building official, the deputy building official. I did some research and salary comparison between the City of San Mateo, and it looks like the proposed salary is higher than what is the, the current salary for the deputy building official in the City of San Mateo. I just want to emphasize that we are relatively smaller city from the City of San Mateo. And also, the, the number of, of staff that would be under the supervision of the deputy building official should have been presented in a workflow. Also, the finance, I think it's the finance manager. It would be nice to see the comparison for the salary for the finance accounting manager. With the exception of the deputy building official. The finance manager. the accounting supervisor. I'm requesting to have the salary comparison for these positions. So I am pulling the three positions from what was originally presented. The deputy building official. And the finance manager.
And the accounting supervisor. That's the third.
And the accounting supervisor. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Through to Chair. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alvarez, thank you for your questions and comments. I just, my name's Nick Pagaros. I'm the city's Administrative Services Director and CFO. And I would like just to walk through some of the changes that are before the council this evening, starting with the accounting supervisor. As part of our, our regular practice, we went through an organizational review. We had a vacancy for an accounting manager. And when we went through our organizational review, it was determined that the reorganization to Administrative Services allows us to hire a level below the accounting manager, which is the accounting supervisor. And as we look at our salary schedule, so, so there is a budgetary savings for that position that, that is part of our regular review, and we have vacancies. The, the reason that the salary is where it is right now is a practice that we call internal alignment. So we look at a position that has a similar range, scope of duties, or a span of control, the number of folks who report to that individual, and we set the salary equivalent. In our current salary schedule, we have two positions. One is the Financial Services Manager and the Financial Services Supervisor. And we have an accounting manager, but we do not have an accounting supervisor. The manager is a higher-paid classification than the supervisor. So our recommendation this evening is to link internally align the accounting supervisor with the Financial Services Supervisor. So that, that's hopefully a little more background on the accounting supervisor position. I will add that in, as part of our recruitment process, we did advertise this salary range, and the feedback that we got from the market is accounting professionals make far more than, than what we, than what we're offering. We're not asking for an increase beyond the current sort of internal alignment with, with our finance team. I'll jump now to the finance manager position. There is no recommended change in the salary schedule. The, currently, the position is titled Financial Services Manager. We're requesting that we delete the services piece of the title. And again, that is part of our ongoing review, an operational review of Administrative Services. Each division in Administrative Services has a manager. So we have a Financial Services Manager currently. We have a HR manager and an IT manager. Just for simplicity's sake, the recommendation is to remove supervise, services, and just have finance manager. So there's no budgetary impact there. With respect to the, to the deputy building official, the analysis, similar to what we went through with the accounting supervisor, is looking at both the internal organizational structure, our success in recruiting and retaining a position. This particular position was added to the budget for last fiscal year and has, and has only been filled for less than a month. So this position has been vacant. When we went out to the market to see what position might be more attractive to the applicant pool, what we learned is that the deputy building official title, what is attractive. And similar to our practice with internal alignment, the salary range that is, that is proposed for the principal planner is the salary range that we're recommending for the deputy building official. One of the challenges that we have in our salary schedule is a term called compaction, which means there's very little delta between one position that reports to another. And, and so, you know, we're, we're significantly limited in, in, you know, what we can do with salary ranges outside of the negotiating, the negotiation cycle. So I, I hope that that addressed your concerns about the, I think it was three positions, was it? Yeah, three positions.
Thank you, Nick. Can I have a follow-up? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm okay with the finance positions and the salary. But I, I don't see the purpose of having a deputy building official. I think the position for the building manager or supervisory position to oversee, to, it would have been nice to see a workflow or matrix in the job description for the building, proposed deputy building official, because we have a relatively small amount of staff in the building department. And we have a consultant, I believe, who is overseeing the two building inspectors, and also a, one permit technician right now. So it's very small staff to be having a deputy building official compared to having just a supervisor or a, a, a building manager, the, the, the original position that we had proposed last year. Also, the salary range is a little bit on the high side compared to the number of people that the, the deputy building official will be managing or overseeing. And so I don't see the, the need of the building, deputy building official for the, for the, the community development. I am okay with the principal planner. I support the principal planner if this will promote internal, internal promotion. And I think we need, we definitely need the, the principal planner for the department, except for the, the deputy building official. Thank you.
Anything else from staff this time? Councilmember Medina.
Yes, that's a very annoying moth. It's gone all the way there and back, and now it's going to our city attorney, so be careful over there. My question basically is, these changes, we, we went through budget, we spent a lot of time in budget, and this is going through, what is the net cost of these changes from the budget that we went, just went through?
So the, the net cost for the city manager, so going through total, the only one that we have certainty for is the city manager, because that person is currently an employee. And so we have, we have the 3.75% there. Accounting supervisor is a savings, building, I'm sorry, I'll go, finance manager is no change. The human resources is a director is, has been removed, and that was part of the budget. So, so the impact, the net impact on the budget would likely, or would result from the principal planner and the deputy building official, and that depends on their appointment, what, what range they're, they're appointed to, which, and they're vacant, they're currently vacant.
So, so there is no net change in the budget?
Not for.
That's, that's what the question basically is. And I just, I understand the city manager, it's a change in compensation. But these other positions, it's a reconfiguration of the Administrative Services and Community Development Program or Office, the different.
Yes.
Classifications in there.
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure about that. I, the additional detail, and I understand that Councilmember Alvarez has the most experience with the building department, because she worked in our building department and currently works in San Mateo's building department. So I understand our building department's pretty small, and to have a deputy, I, I hear Councilmember Alvarez concerned, but it's primarily a change in title. That's basically it. The job duties remain basically the same, and it looks good in the market when you're hiring somebody to be second-in-command in the building department, that that person has the title of building, the building official part on it.
Just, just one clarification, if I may, Mr. Mayor. While the title that's proposed this evening is deputy, is, has deputy tied to it, it's not your traditional deputy, which would be a second-in-command in a department. The second-in-command or the, the highest-level ranking staff member in, in community development on the building side is the chief building official. And so that is really functions at the, at the director, at the deputy or second-in-command level for the community development group on the building side. So I, I hope I provided a little more information there.
Yes, you did. So, thank you.
Other questions or comments from colleagues?
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, go ahead.
Just wanted to find a way that we can get some, it'd be great to have a unanimous vote on this of support. Does this action have, have to happen tonight? Is there any problem with delaying this for, until the next council meeting? And then perhaps Councilmember Alvarez could have further discussions about this topic, and maybe we can come to a vote at that time.
Through to Chair.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Councilmember Medina. I, I think it would be best if we can see a, a job description of the crossover. It's a change of title from the building manager to a deputy building official, which is a higher-level position than the, the, the building manager. So what would be the detailed description? If we are, if, if we are offering a higher position, it might not change our budget, the budget that we approved this year, fiscal year, but it may very well affect next year's budget, because the starting salary is higher than what the other jurisdiction offers. It's, it looks appealing, but like I said, we It's, it looks appealing, but like I said, we are relatively a small city and less staff to manage. So if we continue to pay a higher scale salary for executive range of salary with the less amount of work to manage the staff, I think it will be extravagant.
Go ahead. Thank you, councilmember, Mr. Mayor, and, councilmember Alvarez, and councilmember Medina. The, let me just collect my thoughts here after hearing the city manager suggests that we, oh, you got it.
I got it.
Congratulations. She takes her business. Okay. Let me think here. Where was I?
Let's have the community development director, Peter Gilli, maybe.
I have, I just have a couple of points. First is, as I do want to remind the council that community development is no longer in the general fund, that this is part of the special revenue fund and recovers its fees. I'm not suggesting that that diminishes, that that diminishes your concern, councilmember Alvarez, but I do, I did want to highlight that point because that is new this year. The, I'm sorry, I just, to your question, councilmember Medina, we do have, Calpers does have a regulation that we adopt, in order to pay employees a salary, we have to have a council adopted salary schedule. As I mentioned, the, the only position that is filled in this, in this list is the city manager's position. So we would like to have that at the very minimum in this evening. The other positions, we are moving forward with the accounting supervisor classification. We've, and so because that was lower than the budgeted range, we do have a finalist for that position. We'd like to make that as well. And I, now I can turn it over to the, to the community development director to address concern, additional concerns.
Yes, thank you. Mr. Mayor.
There you go.
It's on now. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, the, there are a number of factors involved in the two positions that were, we are asking for approval of in the community development department. At the fundamental level, we have two managers, one in, one in planning, one in building. Both would benefit from having a supervisor level. And when we did the internal alignment on, on the salaries, question of equity came up of if the number two in planning is going to be paid this, and they generally have the same type of supervision and, and support role as whatever you call the number two person in building, it's, it's a question of equity. Why would, why would one be paid in a different manner? They're both supervising roughly the same number of people. They both have a high volume of work that they would be handling. And so that's why there was that purposeful attempt to align the salary of the deputy building official with the principal planner. And the, calling it a deputy building official is primarily to make it more attractive and align with the code. It could be called something else, but I think the biggest issue is, is about the salary, not necessarily the title. At least that's how I'm understanding what the comments are. But on the issue of pay, we think it's important to have, have the level of equity there that there, between the two supervisor, supervisor levels. And there is still a decent separation between the chief building official and the deputy building official. So we think overall it is a very strong benefit and will help with succession planning. Because as, as was stated right now, right now, the chief building official has to supervise everyone in building. We, in the last budget, we added a position, which we have not been able to fill yet. There's actually three vacancies in building that we do rely on contract staff to support, but the goal is to hire permanent staff. And that's what, an action on this would, would allow us to start the recruitment process.
I'm okay with the planner, the, the principal planner position. I understand that we need to attract candidates to work for us. But the, the point of the matter is the, the building manager will basically work as, or do, perform the duties supervising the staff, the, the building inspectors, two building inspectors. And right now, we only have one permit technician or two. We have one consultant. Rather than paying a higher level position to do the same work as the business manager, as the, the building manager. It is a higher level position than the, the building manager. And the building manager, in my opinion, will do, do or perform the duty of what we expected the, the deputy building official to do as well. I think, I think the discrepancy here is we don't have the job description presented between the business, what the, the building manager would perform compared to the, the deputy building. And, and I know for a fact that the deputy building official, since it's a higher level position, will have a much higher level duty or task to oversee. It's a second in command from the building, building official. And it can perform plan check, it can perform supervisory to our building officials, can do field inspections. But I think what the city needs is overseeing our staff, the building, the building inspectors and the permit technician.
So just to clarify, out of the three that you had brought up, the finance manager and the accounting supervisor you're okay with?
Yes.
Yes. So we're, we're down to the department building official.
Correct.
Or deputy. Is there any other comments from staff at this time? Are there any comments from the public?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay. So the question was asked, so we're down to one position. Is there any way to have that removed within the resolution and have that come back with, whether it's the job description or some additional information, city attorney?
As a matter of adopting, Mayor Medina, as a, as a matter of adopting the resolution, you can amend the motion to eliminate that position as long as staff didn't notice, note any concerns with delaying the adoption of that one position.
Because obviously with one position, it will affect the one that administrative services director had referenced. That's, it's in background, right?
No.
No? The accounting supervisor, yes. Yes. So that would affect if we did not pass that?
Correct.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
But we don't have anyone in background for the deputy building official.
Yeah, okay.
So it wouldn't affect any hiring underway right now.
Okay. So there's an, an option as well. So back to my colleagues. Councilmember Hamilton.
I would suggest that councilmember Alvarez make an amended motion.
Anybody can do it.
If I could ask a question before.
Absolutely.
Since there was a delay there. So if we were to move forward with a motion that did not include that position, do we anticipate that staff would come back with an alternative way forward that would allow the staffing to occur, that, the required staffing to get the job done in that department?
Through to chair. Thank you, vice mayor. The, from what I, from what I, how I understand councilmember Alvarez's request is that we return with comparative job description. The job description for the deputy, the deputy building official is on the website, but it's not included in the packet. So we would return with that. We would also return with the organization chart for community development so that you can see, you know, visually how many direct reports and what, what duties or what services will be provided. That information we can return on the, at the next meeting in October if you're, if the council so wishes.
Okay. And, and I noticed in the table that we are aligning the deputy building official position with the principal planner, which is a net new position that's being added. And so if we could have some context around that principal planner position, how it fits into the organization as well, so that we can understand why that's the one we're aligning to.
So we can add that analysis to the staff report. Yeah, community development director Gilli just corrected me that the principal planner is not a net new position. It's a, is it a senior? It's a vacant senior planner.
It's a vacant?
Senior planner.
Senior planner. Because in, in the table, it says change type is position. It's the add position, it says.
Yeah, and I think that that was shorthand, unfortunately, for adding a position to the salary schedule. The senior planner is still in the salary schedule. Principal planner is, is a new line in the salary schedule. So it's add position. Apologies for that confusion. This recommendation does not change the city's FTE count as authorized by council.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Make a motion.
FTE, why don't you? Just so everybody understands. Yes. FTE is the abbreviation of full-time equivalent personnel. So an employee who works full-time. Thank you. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move the motion to approve item under consent calendar, item I, with the exception of the deputy building official.
I'll second. There's been a motion seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. And as was articulated, as far as items to be brought back, with the addition of what the vice mayor had mentioned, would be appreciated at the next meeting. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go to item seven, conduct of business.
Consider adoption of a resolution approving the recommendation of the service award committee to award the recognition of extraordinary, extraordinary service award to Harry Costa by naming the stage at Centennial Plaza after him, posthumously, I knew it was going to, with placement of the plaque on or near the stage and approving the recommendation of the service award committee to award the recommendation of the extraordinary service award to Mike Palmer with placement of the award plaque near Diamond One in City Park.
Thank you very much. Now we'll turn it over to the vice chair, Jessica Martinucci.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Jessica Martinucci and I am the vice chair of the Service Recognition Committee. This evening, I am here to present the consideration of adopting a resolution honoring Harry Costa and Mike Palmer as recipients of the recognition of extraordinary service award. In this presentation, I will cover several topics, including the purpose of the service recognition program, the formation of the service recognition committee, the service histories of Harry Costa and Mike Palmer, and the recommended action, next steps, and any questions you may have. This evening's objective, I think I'm one slide ahead, yeah? I'll slow down. This evening's objective is to receive this presentation on the service recognition program and consider Harry Costa and Mike Palmer for extraordinary service award. Let's see. The service recognition program is designed to honor those who have made significant contributions to the San Bruno Committee through dedication and sustained service. There are two levels of awards, the special service award and the extraordinary service award. This evening, our focus is on the extraordinary service award, which requires a minimum of 25 years of service to the community and nominations from two recognized San Bruno organizations. Okay, I'm nearsighted, that's farsighted. So here we go. The service recognition committee is composed of two commissioners, each from the Culture and Arts Parks and Recorations and Planning Commissions. This year's committee includes Rick Biasati, Pamela Gamble, Jeannie George, Chris Gonzalez, Arros Harmon, and myself, Jessica Martinucci. On September 4th, our committee met to evaluate Harry Costa and Mike Palmer for the extraordinary service award. The San Bruno Lions Club and the San Bruno Rotary Club nominated Mr. Costa and Mr. Palmer. Let's take a moment to recognize the contributions of the nominees. Harry Costa was known as the mayor of San Mateo Avenue and his service to San Bruno was extensive. For over 30 years, he owned Costa's Just Things on San Mateo Avenue. His leadership roles included serving as San Bruno Lions Club president and treasurer, organizing the Posey Parade multiple times, and acting as longtime president of the San Bruno Chamber of Commerce. He was also a vital member of the Sister City Committee representing San Bruno in Narita, Japan, and he played a key role in organizing the San Bruno Street Fair for many years. Mike Palmer has dedicated nearly 50 years to the San Bruno community. He was a baseball coach for San Bruno Youth Baseball Leagues from 1976 to 2002. He founded and led multiple baseball leagues, including Peninsula Colt Baseball, San Bruno Colt Baseball, and the San Bruno Youth Baseball League. Since 2010, he has served as a park and recs commissioner, becoming chair in 2012. Notably, he was instrumental in establishing the park visit program, which ensures regular assessments of our parks. And he served on the San Bruno Recreation and Aquatic Construction Advisory Board from 2017 to 2024. The recommendation action this evening is adopt a resolution approving the recommendation of service award committee to award the recognition of extraordinary service award to Harry Costa by naming the stage at Centennial Plaza after him, posthumously, with placement of the plaque on or near the stage, and approving the recommendation of service award committee award. The recognition of the extraordinary service award to Mike Palmer with the placement of the award plaque near Diamond One in City Park. Next steps after council approved the awards includes fabrication of the award plaques, which will take a number of weeks. Following that, there will be a dedication ceremonies held for Harry and Mike. This concludes my presentations. I welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you very much for the presentation and the information. And so that is AK, well, Diamond One, but Lera Field is what we're referencing. Questions on the presentation? There are none? So I think you're okay to be seated. Speaker cards.
I have one speaker card, Peter Carey.
Mr. Mayor, council, staff, and a big thank you to Travis. I'd like to thank you for this opportunity to reiterate what we just went over as far as both gentlemen, but Harry Costa for me. Anybody that had to any interaction? Anybody that had to any interaction or dealt with him knows what kind of guy he was. Yes, the mayor of San Mateo Avenue, Mr. San Bruno, and many other things. The amount of love and joy that he felt for San Bruno, if you knew him, you would see it. Anyway, thank you very much for the consideration.
Thank you very much for your comments.
I have no speaker cards.
Okay, and just, just as an FYI, Gail Costa is aware of this and has been contacted through Mr. Carey, so is aware of this item before us this evening. And Mr. Palmer is aware too. So, but anyway, any action from the body on this important item?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to make a quick comment, though, of these are two great San Bruno residents that truly served our community, and so thank you all for your recommendations, and I'd be happy to move forward with the approval of this resolution.
Second. Is there a motion, a second, on the question, is there any other persons that wish to make? No, that's okay. We're trying to get going.
I would absolutely echo Councilmember Medina's comments. These are two legends, legends in San Bruno history, and this is more than appropriate recognition for their outstanding service. I will be supporting this for sure.
Yeah, obviously, I think quite a bit, but really beyond what was stated, or what is dated, or known, or what title, it went beyond that, right? It's a lot of things that Harry did down on San Mateo Avenue. It's his investment, he didn't live here all the time, but he, his heart was here all the time. And that's very important to know. And I know this is important to a lot of folks, and Mr. Palmer has done quite a bit and even continues to try to now memorialize all of the baseball, and he has this big project, so. And I can't tell you how much Harry, through the Narita Sister City Program, a lot of it and its successes thanks to him. And Mike continues to make sure we're running smooth. So with that, go ahead and call for the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Didn't think so? Passes unanimously. Thank you to the committee, and thank you for being here this evening, and our congratulations to the Costa family and to Mike Palmer. With that, we'll move on to item eight, council committee report outs. Do we have any? No? No. I just had, I guess it was last week, emergency services council, the joint power agreement for that has been updated and approved by the committee. I chaired that meeting, so that document will be coming to all of the municipalities and towns that are involved for review by the council and adoption, and for it to be reinstated and updated. With that, we'll move on to comments from councilmembers. Councilmember Medina.
Yes. Second Harvest is tomorrow. That's where 350 families are going to get groceries from Second Harvest of Silicon Valley, and the groceries are distributed by volunteers. And I want to encourage anyone that has time to come out and volunteer. There has been a change in the way that we distribute the food. We used to have it boxed, and the cars would drive up, and then we would fill up the cars, trucks with the boxes of food. So Second Harvest, excuse me, is now going to change the way that we're going to hand out the food to a more of a farmer's market, which will require a lot more volunteers, and it'll take more time to do so. But this is something that is definitely worthwhile, and if anybody has any time, from 1:45 to 4 o'clock is when we're going to be working at Bel Air at 4:50 Third Avenue. Bring your sunscreen, bring hats, it's going to be another warm day, but it's definitely a worthwhile event. So even if you could only come up for an hour, show up. And if you or somebody you know needs food, show up. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Yeah, this, this coming Saturday is the monthly pancake breakfast at the American Legion on San Mateo Avenue. Serving starts at 8:30 and runs till 10:30-ish or when food runs out. It's always a great time, and encourage everybody to bring, bring your family and come out. It's 12 bucks for adults, $6 for kids, and all the proceeds go to benefit our veterans through the American Legion. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo what was said earlier in our public hearing. I want to, I don't know, if requesting what the public requested earlier to be agendized would duplicate what councilmember Hamilton had requested in the past. I would like to request the parking meter issue to be agendized next week.
You mean the next meeting?
I'm sorry, next meeting. The parking meter issue, the broken kiosk, perhaps we can look into it and discuss what would be the best solution to help the merchants and the public, because if we are having too many kiosks, and thank you for recognizing that or acknowledging that we have X amount of kiosks that are broken, and I don't think it's enough to just recognize it. I think action should be needed right away, meaning like if, if there's a lot of kiosks that are malfunctioning, the ticket shouldn't be issued in the first place. And, and the merchant or the public shouldn't have to go through the trouble of contesting it, calling the website. So those are the topics that I think it's important to be discussed.
Okay. I hear what you're saying, were we talking about coming back at the next meeting for, I mean, we were told the parts are ordered, but like, were you asking like, okay, what's the ETA? We know the process of that the sergeant can review it and the tickets can be reversed. But I guess I'm trying to, for staff to feel that they understand exactly what's being asked because it's, so it's more narrow to understand specific.
I understand that the public can contest it, and there's a website to call, but why do we have to issue a ticket on a broken kiosk? I think it's important to, to tell the public that this, we heard what, what the merchant explained earlier, there are X amount of distance of, of working kiosk. If, if a member of the public parks on a, parked on a specific site, and the meter is nowhere to be found, 30 feet away or 50 feet away, and they come back to their car and find a ticket, then they would have to go through the trouble of reporting it, contesting it. I guess what I'm saying is, why don't we hold, or is there a way to hold issuance of the ticket for those kiosks that are malfunctioning?
Okay, so that's a question staff can come back at the next meeting, and, because I think what you're asking for is just a specific question, which I appreciate. Thank you, it helps me. Assistant City Manager.
Sure. So as Acting Chief Brandonberg mentioned, there are alternatives ways to pay. So the way we view our parking regulations is that we, we have a right to enforce them right now, because there are alternative ways to pay that are posted on the kiosks. That said, back at the August 27th meeting, there was an agendized request to look at a short-term paid parking option and green zones in the downtown, and we have not agendized that yet for a meeting, in part because the police chief is unable to attend, as you see tonight's meeting, and the October 8th meeting. But we are planning on bringing a sort of a comprehensive report back on parking to you and address the short-term parking topics once the chief is back in town and we have time to prepare the agenda item. He will not be at the next meeting, so I would not recommend agendizing it at the next meeting. That said, what I'm hearing tonight is we need to do more outreach, so we need to do a better job of making sure the public understand those alternative ways of paying. We probably need to give them some tips on how to do it, right? I mean, for a brand-new user, you go to the kiosk because that's, you think is the fastest way, but I think once you know how to use the app, it can be faster and easier to use, and it's instant. You know, you can literally do it in your car before you even get out of your car, so that's nice. You won't have to worry about a ticket. But I'm hearing more outreach is needed, and so I think that that is something we can look at doing in October. And we're just frankly not ready to come back at the next meeting, but what I'm hearing are questions about enforcement and kiosk repairs and making sure the public understands how the system works, because you have adopted these regulations and they are in effect, and we do not, as staff, have the ability just to, to sort of unilaterally decide not to enforce adopted regulations from the City Council.
And what I think I'm hearing is just to bring back the, she, councilmember has a question. If it's not functioning, we already heard the acting chief says, yes, it alerts it, but then we're talking about the issuance. I think that's the topic that I've heard you ask. So maybe at the next meeting, whether it's under announcements or something, so that we can communicate that.
We will bring an update back under announcements and update the community on this topic, and then again, we've scheduled a more robust paid parking program and green parking zones update for when the chief returns and we have time to prepare. Thank you.
From Mike?
I'm sorry. Could I make a comment on this?
Okay.
Just really fast. I just, I just want to make sure that my comment from earlier is taken, taken into consideration when we talk about the alternative ways to pay. Not everybody has a smartphone. So if, if the alternative is to use the kiosk, which is right here in front of me, where I can use cash, or I can use a credit card or whatever, and it's right here, and I don't have a smartphone, and it's broken, and 20% of our kiosks are broken, and I don't have a smartphone, I'm getting a ticket, or I leave, or I'm leaving. There's no, there is no alternative in that scenario. So I just want to make sure that we're doing, I don't even respond, but I just want to make sure that when we're looking at this, we have to look at that scenario as well, because it is an absolute inequity issue.
Yeah, maybe I'll just clarify, the 20%, some of them have some functionality. So some of them, as Acting Chief Brandonberg said, the, the credit card machines are difficult to replace, but they may still accept cash and coins. So it's sort of just important to emphasize. And of the eight that were vandalized, two have some functionality, six are not functional. So I just want to make sure, the 20% number, they're not all down and non-functional. And what we've heard tonight is a big issue, especially given the changing sunlight, is really the solar program, and as we look to the winter or solar access, we need to take a really good look at that.
Yes. Okay. Yes, Vice Chair.
I'd like to add one more thing to this, to this request, and I heard from a few speakers tonight that there, that LAS is perhaps ticketing very aggressively and not allowing enough time for somebody to make the payment. I'd like to know, if we could hear from LAS about what their policy is, how they go about doing that. Is there any concept of a grace period, just allowing minutes or even seconds for somebody to walk down the street? Perhaps somebody with mobility issues could take longer to go down and pay that. So I would just like to hear what their general practice is, and if there's anything that could be done to be more sensitive to the need to move around. And I know these kiosks exist all over the peninsula, so we're not unique in that, so I'm sure there's plenty that could be learned, and if we can make adjustments that make it less draconian, I think that would be appreciated, so I'd like to hear about that as well.
I think that would be helpful, mobility. I know my mother would, would get a ticket, unless she just, the mobility issue, and she's not going to download the app. She doesn't know how.
I think my dad, Mr. Medina, would have the same issue. He would lose it if he, but anyhow, I don't want to talk about it right now. Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to emphasize, I think what I'm hearing and what we heard from, from our residents and merchants, that additional leniency, especially where the meters are broken, and not really making them, making the shoppers go through an additional task. If the meters, if a part of the meter doesn't work, then LAS will be notified that those meters are not working, and then therefore don't issue a ticket on that block where those meters are broken. I think that's, that's what I'm hearing, and that's what I'm requesting.
Okay. So since this is only council comments, I know I've allowed a lot of, out of them, surprised the light didn't go on over by the city attorney. I think they've heard enough, and, and everybody understands. Okay, so anybody else on council comments? You're very welcome. Thank you, councilmember. I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of things. On Saturday, I went to ribbon cutting in South San Francisco for the Carol Matsumoto Plaza, and their art sculpture, or the sculpture is actually very impressive, and of course, if you can remember what the train station looked like then and now, it's quite a transition. Also, I went to a celebration of life for Eddie Fonseca, who worked for our San Bruno Cable Department for 36-plus, according to Kathy, 38, so let's say 38 years with the city of San Bruno. Kind of, he got the nickname of the San Bruno Cable Guy, was on the, the teams for La Fiesta. Those that lived in town a long time will know that that's where Celia's is. But it was amazing to see, here's a person who went to cap, here's a person who loved the job at San Bruno Cable, and it was very evident, and a part of the items that were out, as well as his service certificates for his various years of service were displayed by the family. So he truly loved his job. And on Sunday, as we know, Caltrain is electrified, and I want to thank the Public Works Department. I know Mr. Lee will say, hey, Juan Ritchie, and then Nancy, and then others that were there that put together the event, using local vendors for both entertainment, shaved ice, donuts, and the popsicles. And that was all done, and it was a beautiful day, and the Public Works Department did a great job. This is not, they pave streets, but they don't throw events. So they did great, and made sure everything got taken care of. I want to thank you. And then going into the city of San Mateo for their event, and that's where Calgrated, they had over 7,000 RSVPs for Sunday, about 8,000 for Saturday in Palo Alto. So the train was full, I will tell you, by the time we got to San Mateo, you, there was nowhere to sit or stand. So I think the community enjoyed it, and I want to thank everybody and thank that. One final thing, just on an interesting note, across from St. Roberts is a young man, Nick, that came back, he joined the Army at 18, he's now 22 and he's back. So he went to St. Roberts, and I found out that as he was coming home, the whole school was out in front applauding his arrival home, chanting USA, USA. And so he was more than amazed, giving them high fives, talked to his mom, and welcomed him back. And he reminded me that I had thanked him for going into the service at his high school graduation, and now he has changed a lot, but again, he couldn't wait to get back, and he's having a hard transition, because it's not structured as, as much, but he's happy to be home. So, thank you. With that, we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting, and for the month of September, and we will meet at the next regular City Council meeting, which will be held on October 8th, 2024, at 7:00 PM. Meeting adjourned.